Good afternoon, welcome to our May 7th meeting. Before the formal city council meeting convenes, we will have two meetings of special financing districts. We'll begin with the Park Central Community Facilities District. I will call that board meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Board member Conlin.
Here.
Board member Gervais.
Here.
Board member Guardado.
Here.
Board member Hernandez.
Here.
Board member Hodge Washington.
Here.
Board member Pastor. Board member Robinson.
Yeah.
Board member Stark.
Here.
Board member Waring. Vice Chair O'Brien. Chairwoman Gallego.
Here.
We'll begin with Resolution PC 21, which approves the proposed district budget for fiscal year 2025-26, and a proposed five-year financial forecast, and calls for a public hearing on such a budget and forecast. Board members Conlin or Gervais, do either of you have a motion?
I would like to...
Yes, dear person, Gallego, I move to adopt Resolution PC 21, approving the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Roll call. Conlin.
Aye.
Gervais.
Aye.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor. Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes.
Pass is nine zero.
Thank you, and thank you to our board members for joining us. We'll now adjourn the Park Central Community Facilities District Board, and we will call to order the Verdun Community Facilities District Board. Will the clerk call the roll?
Board member Guardado.
Here.
Board member Hernandez.
Here.
Board member Hodge Washington.
Here.
Board member Pastor. Board member Robinson.
Here.
Board member Stark.
Here.
Board member Waring. Vice Chair O'Brien. Chairwoman Gallego.
Here.
We'll begin with Resolution Number V six, which approves the proposed district budget for fiscal year 25-26, and calls for a public hearing on such a budget. Vice Mayor, Acting Vice Mayor Stark, do you have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number B dash zero six.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor. Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes.
Pass is seven zero.
We will now adjourn the Verdun Community Facilities District Board meeting, and we will move towards the formal council meeting. Before we begin that, we'll invite Police Chaplain John Taylor up for an invocation.
Please pray with me. Dear Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today for the many blessings for life itself, and for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the freedoms that we enjoy in this great nation. You have said that we as citizens should obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. So I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs and welfare of our people, a confidence in what is good, just, and right, the ability to work together in harmony, as well as personal peace in their lives, enjoying their work. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them the assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Phoenix. It's in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Chaplain Taylor. Councilwoman Stark, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor O'Brien. Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mario Barajas is with us to provide Spanish interpretation. Mario, would you introduce your team?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Mario Barajas. I'll be serving along with my team member, El Siduarte, as interpreters for today's meeting for our Spanish speakers. Now I'll take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish-speaking audience. Hoy buenas tardes, yo soy Mario Barajas, y junto con mi colega, El Siduarte, estaremos sirviendo como interpretes a los de habla hispana el día de hoy. Quisiéramos recordarle de que si es que van a estar dando un comentario público, pueden hacer el comentario en su totalidad, y de esa manera, al terminar ustedes, el intérprete le va a poder interpretar todo lo que usted haya dicho. Solamente pedimos de que haga fuerte, claramente, y de una manera clara. Muy bien entonces, muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number... I apologize. G 7382 through 78387, S 51864 through 51894, and Resolutions 22299 through 22301.
Thanks so much, and now I will invite the city attorney to explain the role of public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. Additionally, any member of the public who appears before council in their capacity as a lobbyist must, as required by Phoenix City Code, disclose this fact before addressing council. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language threats or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. We'll begin with the meeting minutes. Councilwoman Pastor, do you have a motion on item one?
I move item number one.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Guardado, do you have a motion on item two?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 5th, 2025.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next we go to boards and commissions. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve mayor and city council boards and commission nominations as revised.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. We have a very distinguished group to be sworn in today, and we'll ask you to come forward. Please raise your right hand. State your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
State your board or commission.
State my service and commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and thank you for serving the city of Phoenix. And then if you'll go behind the council members, we'd love to congratulate you. Thank you again, and congratulations to our newly sworn-in board and commission members. We are very excited to have you serving. We'll next go to the liquor license portion of our agenda. The city council provides an advisory role to the state of Arizona on liquor licenses. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
I move to approve items four through twelve.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve items thirteen through sixty-two, except the following. Items twenty-eight, thirty-eight, sixty through sixty-two, noting that item fifty-nine is withdrawn. Items sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two have additional information. And can the clerk confirm if there's any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, also excluding item fifty-four. That's item fifty-four.
Fifty-four. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We'll next go to item twenty-eight, which is the authorization to apply for, accept, and enter into an agreement for Voca grant funds. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
I move to approve item twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll turn to Councilwoman Hernandez for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to do a little background on this program. I'm a little familiar with it at the state level, the city level. Just had a few questions. I know that if we get this grant, it will go to the Phoenix Prosecutor's Office to fund staff for the victim service unit. Can Julie, can you share more about the unit and the services that that unit provides to victims?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for the question. So as you stated, this is going exclusively to our prosecutor's office to fund five positions that support victims of crime. And I do have staff here. If you have further questions or would like to understand a little bit more about the program, I'd welcome them to come up, and that is our city prosecutor.
Awesome, thank you so much, Julie. The... And maybe a follow-up, if I can get a list of what those services, what those staff would do for the victims. And my only other question is, does the unit provide those services directly, or do we contract any of those services out?
So, Mayor, members of council, we provide those services directly from our prosecutor's office.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item thirty-eight is the police crime lab air conditioning and building automation systems control contract. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, before I make the motion, when I see crime lab, I think of chemists. And my dad today is in the hospital with pneumonia. And so I know chemists do a lot of important work, and one of them is solving crimes, so I am happy to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have Councilwoman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a few questions on this for probably... I don't know, Lori, if you want to start with these, and if other staff wants to come up. Just questions around this program. My first question is around the cost. Given that I know we are updating, or we're in the process of updating a new building to move the police department. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? Why investing into this if we are moving buildings?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez. The crime lab is actually located in a building across the street from the current police headquarters that is separate from the headquarters and will remain separate from the headquarters even when PD moves into 100 West Washington Street. And so that lab facility is something that we intend to continue to utilize. It is a newer facility and a facility that the lab will remain in, and so we need to invest in maintenance and support of that facility. We have staff here who can assist with answering those questions, to include Public Works, as well as John Mel, our police administrator over the crime lab.
Awesome, thank you. My next question is, I saw that the funding will come out of the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan. Is there reasoning why the funding would come out of that bucket?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, that's a great question. That is the way that our facilities funding is structured. And I can ask Public Works Director Felipe Moreno to speak a little bit to that, but essentially, Public Works takes care of the majority of city facilities, and so the funding runs through their budget. Felipe, is there anything you want to add to that?
Sure, thank you, Lori. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez. Yes, this is part of our major maintenance budget, and so with certain projects that are prioritized across the city departments, we have a major maintenance pot of money that is used to prioritize and take care of infrastructure that's aging, needs to be replaced, or that's at end of life. And so this is one of those projects that is part of that major maintenance capital improvement budget that's supported citywide.
Thank you, Felipe. So that would be the reason why it comes out of the Public Works Capital Improvement and not the police budget side of it? Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Another question, my next question would be... When we're making projects like this, or capital improvements, does the city authorize, that we authorize as a city, what impact assessments are required when these are first done?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez. When we do the major maintenance assessments, we basically look at all assets across the city. We score in terms of importance, critical failures, things that could pose a health or safety risk. And in doing that, those are prioritized, and there is a matrix and an actual committee that looks at this holistically, cross-departmental committee. They then score this, put them into priorities, and then we decide from there. It's presented to get approval for funding in that priority list. Projects could be reassigned or reprioritized, depending on if something changes or happens within an asset that moves it up on the priority list for risk of health and safety.
Thank you. And as part of that process, is there a racial equity impact piece to it? Do you know by chance?
I have Assistant Director Chris Fuel here that can speak more on the actual scoring criteria with that.
Thank you. And then, just one more question on that. When... And obviously, I'm asking questions because I'm new here, so I want to get up to speed on the background on how these projects came about. Was there any... From your recollection, was there any community engagement or public input process on that project, on that improvement plan?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, no, for this part of capital improvement, we do not have a public or community engagement component.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, that is all my questions. Thank you for the extra information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. I just wanted to chime in and give staff an opportunity to explain a little bit about what it is the lab actually contains. I know we heard a little bit of the life and safety concerns, but it's also for me, as a lawyer and having represented victims, I want to make sure we understand what the role is for this facility and our ability to bring justice to our victims.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Washington. John Cannell, I'm the administrator of the Crime Laboratory, so I'll attempt to provide some background. The laboratory is a dedicated building, it's about 100,000 square feet. We have 174 authorized positions. So we analyze evidence that's collected as part of a... It was a crime within the city of Phoenix. About 25,000 requests per year come through from all levels of offenses, from person crimes to property crimes. This is a laboratory space, it's not an office. So as a laboratory, we have unique requirements to operate. Our laboratory spaces have unique ventilation requirements, and this project will ensure that contamination, the quality continues.
And the contract, if I read it correctly, focuses on the HV and air conditioning, because we do... You can tell us about the quality controls necessary to ensure that evidence maintains its credibility.
Yes, correct. The... Trying to get a little bit technical, but keep it at a higher level. Laboratory spaces are kept at a negative pressure compared to the other spaces. The idea is that with a negative pressure, anything that's in the air inside the lab space stays inside the lab space and doesn't escape. We also have a lot of vents and additional inputs of air and outputs of air. Controlling those pressure differentials takes quite a complex system, and that's what this is related to.
And if the evidence is not kept to the right temperature, or if it fails the quality controls, we run the risk of the evidence being discharged and unable to provide justice to victims. Is that a fair summation?
That is a fair summation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to expound just a little bit on what Councilwoman Hodge Washington was saying. John, I think you will remember this, because I know you were in the crime lab at that time, but I think it started back in June of '05 through August of '06. The valley was terrorized by a guy by the name of Mark Gudel. He was responsible for, if I remember correctly, about nine, ten homicides, and probably three times as many sexual assaults, and a host of other crimes. And those sexual assaults were juveniles as well as adults. There were a host of things. And as much as I would like to say that the police officers, the detectives, were the ones who truly solved that crime, that wasn't the case. It was the personnel in the crime lab. And having a crime lab that is adequately prepared, supplied, and everything else that goes into it allows us to ensure, if we're going to talk about the safety of our communities, that's what it allows us to do. So I just wanted to make sure we all understood the gravity, the importance, and the real work that comes out of that crime lab on something of a daily basis. So with that, I thank all the folks, the professional folks who work in the crime lab. John, you and all your folks deserve congratulations on everything that you do, day in and day out. And that was just one example that I can give a specific recollection on, because I ran that investigation. And without the crime lab and its people, there is no way we would have solved that crime. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman, for leading that really important investigation. Councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin makes an excellent point. There are probably a lot of crimes you wouldn't solve without the crime lab. But I would also point out, there are probably a lot of people who are cleared by evidence that comes out of the crime lab. I would suspect a lot of the stuff you do there would say, nope, they got the wrong person. That's also a product of the crime lab and shouldn't be discounted. Yes, it helps convict people, but I'm sure it also makes sure, oh, we got the wrong person, better go keep looking. Get the right person next time. So something else that probably shouldn't get lost in the shuffle. Thank you.
Thank you. And John, please give the crime lab our thanks, and a special thanks for the chemists. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
No.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven one.
We next go to item fifty-four, which is the approval of a historic preservation demonstration project grant at 412 West Roosevelt Street. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve item fifty-four.
Second.
We have motion and a second. We do have one public comment. Hill Morales. Do we have a Hill Morales here? You do not need to speak? Okay. Thank you. So for folks who are watching, the speaker does not actually need to speak. Any comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I'm just happy that we are providing a grant to preserve a historic building and preserving it and restoring it. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. And this property is considered an outstanding example of the Prairie School architecture style, and is one of the few apartment buildings that were constructed immediately following World War I. Still active today. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next go to item sixty, which is related to the southwest corner of Cave Creek Road and Peoria Avenue. We'll open the public hearing. We do have some individuals registered to speak. We'll begin with Alan on behalf of... Oh, no, I'm sorry, we'll begin with Jimmy Morose, who is a virtual public comment.
First, I would like to thank District Three Councilmember Deborah Stark for all her help, and Amber and Haley. I'm resident of the Point Tapatio. My backyard backs up to Peoria. I have three statements. The first statement I would like to read. The Point Tapatio Community Association Board urges the city of Phoenix to require the builder of the development at East Peoria and Cave Creek Road to limit traffic traveling west on Peoria from the complex, and also limit entering the parking structure from Peoria traveling from the west. I have a statement from the Point at Tapatio Cliffs condominium that butt up to this property. The Point at Tapatio Cliffs condominium Association Board urges the city of Phoenix to require the builder of the development at East Peoria and Cave Creek to limit traffic traveling west on Peoria from the complex, and also limit entering the parking structure from Peoria traveling from the west. I have a statement from Tapatio Cove HOA. On behalf of Tapatio Cove Board of Directors, I'm writing to express concerns regarding traffic control related to the new apartment development. What they would like is to prevent westbound traffic from entering the apartment complex onto Peoria Avenue, thereby reducing the likelihood of vehicles cutting through their community, restrict eastbound traffic from entering the apartment complex from Peoria Avenue, encouraging apartment residents and visitors to use the Cave Creek Road access. Deborah Stark has worked with the developer, and on item nine, bolded, they have agreed to put a traffic control device. From what our understanding is, it's going to make everyone leaving the parking structure travel east towards Cave Creek, but there is nothing there that states But there is nothing there that states traffic coming in from the west of Peoria entering the garage will be able, or will the pork chop prevent that as well, or the traffic control device. Once again, I would like to thank Councilmember Deborah Stark for all her hard work.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Stark, for your hard work. Alan, do you want to speak? You're available to speak if necessary. I feel like Jimmy kind of teed up the good news, but.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of City Council, Alan Bodewin, Norris Design, 901 East Madison Street, representing Alante Properties. And yes, we have heard this from the community, and we completely agree and are willing to accommodate them with a traffic control device at the main entry off of Peoria Avenue, as was the presenter just presented. We're fine with that condition. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. I believe that is all the speakers we have on this item. I will close the public hearing and turn to Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the item per the April 18, 2025 memo from the Planning and Development Director and approve the related ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Daigo?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. Next is item 61, related to the northeast corner of I-17 and Thunderbird Road. We will open the public hearing. We will begin with Dwight Watland.
Your Honor, I'm used to appearing in court. I'm a neighbor, and I speak on behalf of about a handful of neighbors that were dealing with Home Depot on this matter. I had anticipated they would be here and so that they would be speaking first. Nevertheless, thank you very much for the efforts of Councilwoman Stark and also the members of your staff that worked hard coming up with a resolution or a recommendation that was acceptable to both the neighbors and Home Depot. And even though they're not here, I'd like to say I appreciate Home Depot being as cooperative as they were dealing with the neighborhood. So we support the resolution that was proposed by your staff.
Wonderful, thank you for all the time you put in for a successful outcome. We do have available to speak if necessary. Justin, on behalf of the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name's Justin Kincaid. I'm the applicant from Kimley Horn, representing Home Depot. We have been working with Mr. Watland to address their concerns, and I think we've came to a resolution. So I start understanding that there's no opposition to this.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for working together to have a successful outcome. And thank you again to Councilwoman Stark for her work on this case. Close the public hearing, and I'll turn to the councilwoman.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And before I make a motion, I just want everyone to know this is the zoning case that made Peggy Bilstein run for council. And she was a very successful councilperson for 12 years. So thank you, Home Depot, for giving us Peggy Bilstein. I move to approve the item per the April 22, 2025 memo from the Planning and Development Director and approve the related ordinance.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Daigo?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. We next go to item 62, which is the northwest corner of 20th Avenue and South Mountain Avenue. We'll open the public hearing. We'll begin with Jewel Clark, followed by John Fox.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your time today. When this project was originally proposed, there were about, by my count, 52 surrounding homes actively opposed, who stayed opposed. And my colleague, neighbor Jai Gudel, and I worked with the Village Planning Committee and Councilwoman Hodge Washington to get to the point we are today. And I'm personally very encouraged by the revised stipulations and the site plan to create a much more compatible development for our area. And I want to thank our Village Planning Committee and our councilwoman and her staff for all of their work for this outcome. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Wonderful, thank you for your work, and Councilwoman, thank you. Mr. Fox, would you wish to testify?
Yeah, I'm John Fox, the applicant on this site. And I've been working closely with the village as well as the neighbors, and I appreciate their support at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Close the public hearing, and I'll turn to Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to give a few comments before I set the motion. I want to start off by thanking the residents and the planning and development staff who remain engaged throughout this process, and the applicant for returning to the community to listen. For me, development in District 8 has to be rooted in collaboration, not just checking boxes, but actually building trust and relationships. From the beginning, I said that a strong compromise takes both sides leaning in, and I think we've done that successfully in this process. So I really appreciate that the applicant recognized there was more work to be done, and he took real steps to engage with our neighbors and for the neighbors for coming forth with proposal solutions and working and leaning in as well. I've heard from residents that were originally concerned, who now believe that their input made a difference, and that matters. I too believe that the updated plan reflects a more thoughtful process and approach that balances the city's housing goals and the character and concerns of the neighborhoods. So with that, I am encouraged, and I move to approve item, sorry. I move to approve the item per the May 1, 2025 memo from the Planning and Development Director and approve the related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Guardado?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes, but I want to say a few comments. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Hodge Washington for her great work.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Daigo?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. We'll now go to the public comment portion of our meeting, and I will turn to the city attorney to explain this portion.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you so much. We will begin with Ernest Martinez, followed by John Forsythe.
Good afternoon, Mayor K. Daigo, and other members of the city council. I'm Ernest Martinez. At 1932 East Lamar Road in the foothills of Puyallup Peak for 35 years. And I still hike the mountain regularly. I am also the former chairman and currently the treasurer of the Puyallup Fallen Heroes Memorial. I am here to express a concern about a construction project which suddenly sprung up at the Puyallup Peak Ocotillo Ramada early this month in the Phoenix Mountains Preserve. Our memorial committee, the hikers, and other users of the Phoenix Mountains Preserve were blindsided when we found the road to the Ocotillo Ramada at Puyallup Peak blocked. Even more shocking, a huge fence had been erected which stopped the public from using the Ramada and from accessing the many trails to the north of the Ramada. Likewise, the Ramada was blocked from the other direction. In addition, there were no explanatory signs or notices posted anywhere. Signs that were, the only signs that we saw that are still there are signs saying, do not enter, and the park is closed. There were no directional signs either showing hikers and the public a little used option for accessing the trails to the north of the Ocotillo Ramada. And at 8 o'clock this morning, there were still no signs. Blocking access to the Ramada and to the trails north and without forewarning is a very serious disservice to the community. It is a far cry from the public participation, the lengthy public awareness efforts, and pride that was generated by the initial capital improvements at the park a few years ago. More importantly, the new improvements may be illegal in that the public was not given an opportunity to learn and provide input to the project. And we have seen no evidence that the planned improvements were discussed by the public and the funding voted on by the city council. We also have other concerns about the project, including how a 140-foot bridge, invisible landing, and amenities across the wash, as revealed in the plans, does anything to preserve the view and the natural state of the mountain preserve. And on the other end of the road, removing an established park entrance gate, we feel that is not the best use. In conclusion, we are asking that all construction on the project be stopped immediately to allow time for these concerns to be addressed and allow for the vital public input and buy-in that this project requires. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask if our team can follow up with Ernest. John is next, followed by Hill.
Governments derive their just power from the consent of the governed. That was Thomas Jefferson. My name is John Forsythe. I'm here again today to talk about civil rights and democracy. The responsibilities of government are really pretty easy, twofold. One is to provide the services that the citizens demand. But two, much more important, is the protection of its citizens. And that is where I think the city of Phoenix is failing. Therapists will tell you there's three ways to solve a problem. First, you have to admit that you have a problem. Second, you have to be honest. Third, you have to talk about it. Now, we live in a democracy, republic if you wish, but the last time I checked, that is a democracy. Democracies require that the public is informed from their government to what is going on in the government. And to be honest, there's a lot of issues that are going on that this government is completely silent upon. Democracy just doesn't work that way. I've mentioned in the past some management and leadership problems that I perceive that is going on. We had an interim chief we could not make into a chief for more than two and a half years. We had a lieutenant that testified in court that he had never read the Department of Justice report, Lieutenant Moore. For three years plus, this city's been under federal investigation for civil rights violations. Nothing changed. I was at the meeting which we did Wallace and Ladmo Way. It was moved up in the schedule. It was 20 minutes long. I wish we gave 20 minutes to the problems that we have here in this city, especially concerning civil rights. We have, I think this is more than a decade's-long problem, 600 vacancies in the city of Phoenix police. Other police departments across the valley don't have this same problem. I think this comes down to simply a leadership and management issue that police officers don't want to come here and work. Democracies should exactly mirror the morals and values of the people that it serves. I believe the city of Phoenix is deviating from that path. This is what I see. I was born and raised here. Historians will tell you, I'm not a historian, I am a study of history. History always seems to repeat itself constantly. Historians will tell you that you can find out the morals and the values of the citizens in which are served by government by studying the government itself. I don't think a lot of Phoenicians or people who were born and raised here want historians to look back in this time of Phoenix's history and study us. I know we can do a lot better. We have, in my lifetime, done a lot better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go next to Hill, followed by Nicole Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and especially Councilmember Hernandez. Thank you for listening to my concerns. I'd like to start by reading something that Councilmember Hernandez wrote in her bio. She said, "In Phoenix District 7, where I live, we are expected to live 10 years less than neighborhooders in North Phoenix and Scottsdale. Our communities are some of the most criminalized. Our water and air quality are some of the worst in the state. It doesn't have to be this way." I was thrilled when I read that, and I welcome you. I'm hoping to work with you. Our properties are at the southeast corner of 15th Avenue and Taylor, right in the middle and in the thick of the nonsense that's going on there. Really close to Cass. We have many problems. But throughout the years, I've noticed there's small changes make a big impact in that area. Some of the things that should not happen is that waste management, republic, and city workers should not be picking up trash at 3:00 in the morning, at 4:00 in the morning, at 5:00 in the morning, at 6:30 in the morning. This morning, city workers were right next to my home, letting off their brakes on those big trucks. I have a dramatic head injury, so I have very severe pain in my right ear. So all those noises, the train noise, the ambulances, some things we can expect. We live there, we choose to stay there. But city workers, waste management, and the others should not be there at those times. We would really appreciate some assistance in that. We also have some other issues with the alley, where we were part of the initial project of closing the alleys. And then, for some reason, some of the alleys were partially closed. And we are told by the owners that the city is not allowing them to close that part because they want to do first build on it. We need assistance in getting those closed, and that is at the northwest corner of Polk and 15th Avenue. Another issue I have is, two other issues, is one is of major importance. Southwest Gas came to my property unannounced, uninvited, and they damaged my property. This happened about 10 years ago. I've been talking to them. They've apologized. They've claimed they're going to come and fix it. It is about a 40-foot-long trench, two foot deep. They won't even come over and inspect the work that I believe was not even done. Now they're telling me that the statute of limitations expired. My last issue, and I hope you allow me to speak. Councilmember Hernandez, we have been trying to get a hold of the boundaries of the Neighborhood Association for that area.
Thank you.
Jessica Bueno is the president, and we would love it if you would allow us
Thank you. Nicole is next, followed by Tim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pursuant to the City of Phoenix Charter, Chapter 4, Section 22, I, Nicole Rodriguez, am a resident of Phoenix, Arizona. The citizen petition requests the full city council to take action on this matter within 15 days at a formal city council meeting. And this petition is not duplicative of prior requests in the past year, duly acted on by city council. I hereby petition the mayor and council to enact within 15 days resolutions, ordinances, or measures that will, number one, direct the Streets Transportation Department to update city policy and design guidelines to require the use of high-visibility crosswalk markings, for example, zebra and/or perpendicular bar strapping at the signalized and unsignalized pedestrian crossings in accordance with Federal Highway Administration guidance and the city's adopted complete street guidelines. Two, require stop bars at all pedestrian crossings, including intersections with signals, stop signs, and hawk crossings to improve visibility and safety of pedestrians and reduce driver encroachment into crosswalk zones. Background and justification for this. On September 7, 2022, Phoenix City Council adopted Division 01 Road Safety Action Plan, committing to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries by 2050. In support of this, the city council allocated $10 million annually for safety improvements and established the Division 0 Committee, Community Advisory Committee. On October 23, 2024, Division 0 Community Advisory Committee recommended for the, recommended for city to discontinue the use of low-visibility transverse crosswalk markings and instead adopt high-visibility markings along with stop bars at all pedestrian crossings. These recommendations are aligned with both national best practices and the committee's mandate to advise the city on safety-related ordinances and design changes. 2022-2023 Annual Road Safety Action Report, the city's, published by the city of Phoenix, reveals alarming statistics. Over 30,000 annually are seriously injured in crashes every day. 190 deaths annually, with over 100 pedestrians killed by vehicles. Forty-four percent of fatal crashes involve pedestrians, and 40% of killed or seriously injured crashes occur at signalized intersections. Despite these trends, Phoenix continues to ride heavily on non- Despite these trends, Phoenix continues to ride heavily on non-standard transverse lines for crosswalks, which do not meet Federal Highway Administration guidelines for high-visibility crosswalks. Most intersections also lack stop bars, resulting in vehicles blocking pedestrian pathways. The city's own complete streets policy, adopted in 2014, calls for context-sensitive design and the implementation, I'll just get loud if you turn it off, for the implementation of infrastructure that supports safe, accessible, and convenient travel for users of all ages and abilities.
Thank you for your testimony.
Is that okay for a citizen petition to have another paragraph left?
We can accept the entire, we don't have to read every, we can accept the whole petition. Tim is next, followed by Jerry.
Guess it doesn't like me today. Tim Sierkowski, good afternoon and thank you. Yesterday, I know you received in your email from Jerry our mystery project taking place at Payastoa. Everyone's trying to figure out when you guys voted upon allowing this to take place. More importantly, we're trying to figure out when this was brought up to the public, when this went to subcommittee, when this had also gone to the Parks Department. No one seems to have an answer. It might pretty much go back to the explanation of management in the city, but I'm not really sure if it's a management problem or not any longer. I just don't feel that there's good communication or communication taking place between city council and the Parks Department. If you go to Payastoa and you look at the fence, there's nothing posted on the fence because in normal construction zone, you would see a building permit there. Nothing's there. I'm asking the question, why not? None of the park rangers know anything about the construction. These people just showed up one day and said, "Oh, this is what we're doing." My question then becomes, was there a 404 environmental study? How about damaging water, well, washes that were in that specific area? Did anyone do an environmental study to ask this pertinent question? Did they, did they do any of this? We have requested this information through the Center for Law, and we still have not received a response. At the present time, we would like to know exactly who's in charge of this project? Who authorized this project? Where's the money coming from? No one seems to have an answer for any of this. My question is, is going back to management, is the management and the Parks Department going rogue? Are they just a rogue department any longer where we can't get any answers? I thought you guys were talking about transparency. Well, we'd like some transparency because it doesn't seem that we're getting any transparency at the present time. To preserve is a special type of property. You cannot go into this property without having your approval. Does the Parks Department know this? Because if they don't know what really is going on with their own parks, maybe we need to get better management in the parks or a different park person to run the parks because it seems to be in shambles at the present time. So what we're asking for is more transparency. We want to know who's in control, who's signing the checks for this? Where's the money coming from? And where was the public input into doing a 140-foot bridge in Payastoa? Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Van Gass is next, followed by Elia. Izzy Mano.
Hi, Jerry Van Gass. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is getting to be routine. Once again, it seems that the Parks Department has blindsided our council. This happened down at South Mountain, it's happening again. And you know, I'll reference you to your own city charter, which, you know, you're easy to trot out, you know, to justify having the Parks Board weigh in on everything related to the parks. It says right there, under Mountain Preserves, number one, maintain in as pristine state as possible, all preserves. Any alterations have to go in front of the council. None of this happened out there. Mr. Martinez failed to, you know, you know, comment that he's the uncle to Lori Payastoa. And you'll notice on the flyer that was sent to everyone and to a lot of other people that they ripped up the Lori Payastoa Nature Trail with their heavy machinery in a preserve. I mean, this one is really, really baffling to us. But we're going to get, we're going to find out because we've been getting information from other sources. And we will find out who the real culprits are, and we want it stopped immediately because we've got people out there every day. And we're going to find out, and we know it's 3PI money. Once again, that this, you know, the account is being sabotaged and squandered with these episodes. Thank you.
Thank you. Elia is next, followed by Elizabeth Venable. Just, Elia is next. E-L-I-Y-A. And what language will the testimony be in? Okay. And for our communications team, does our software do Swahili?
He's speaking Swahili, but he say, oh.
Okay. So just, but just before you begin, will you remind me of the protocol with Swahili? Should it be, should we let, we just updated our protocol, and this is our first time we've had a use case that wasn't Spanish? So. Okay. So the, the city policy we recently adopted would be that we would use the screen? Is that the policy we? Okay, so we don't want an outside translation, is that the, or?
We have the, the screen translation available.
Okay.
Mayor, it would be at your discretion, I think, if you wanted to allow spoken translation, and it could be compared to the screen translation. But our policy would be to utilize the screen translation as we would normally not have a translator in the language.
Okay. All right. Well, this, we're going to do a live test of Swahili translation, and so we'll compare the screen to the translator. Okay, so we will then do six minutes on the clock? Is that six? Okay, great. All right. All right, we are ready to begin. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, so he say, um.
Sir. Sir. John Paul. John Paul.
Yes, please.
He can speak in Swahili?
Yes.
And then what's going to happen? It's going to get translated up here?
Okay.
And then you can fill in if we're mistaken. Is that correct?
And the screen is still saying Spanish. Is there a software, then we need to do something with the software to tell it Swahili? Okay.
It's, it's not at work.
But I think I can hear. Because he say, oh, he tried to listen what you're talking about, and he asking why when the people from the different countries, when they come here, you don't try to take care for them because of a language? Some people come, no speak very English. So he asking why you can't help them, then you blame them when they sleep outside and they troubling around America.
And if you could speak and ask him to speak into the microphone, that would be helpful.
So now he's speaking Kenyuruanda. So he asking if you can help people from, coming from different countries to help them? How can get it? Easy to have papers and everything, don't be homeless like, like this.
Is he speaking in your language?
Yeah, he makes it Kenyuruanda and Swahili, so. Anything else? He say, he gain trouble once to, then he go in jail. So when he come out, he was lost everything, and family left him. And he lost his paper too, special green card and everything, and social. But when he tried to found the paper, he can't get it. They make him a lot of places, so he need a help for you guys.
Councilwoman Hatch-Washington? Thank you. I believe Human Services last time had tried to assist was that, is that, can we make sure that you guys talk after?
Great, okay. So we'll try to, you let him know, we, the department will try to assist. At the, thank you. All right, Elizabeth is next.
Um, that's a very interesting system. I think you should allow both, you know, a person to accompany sometimes and the translation if it works. I think it's a good idea. You might want to see if it speaks Kenyuruanda. That's the language that he speaks. His Kenyuruanda is similar to Karundi, they're East African languages. There's actually a lot of speakers in the world. All I want to say is that, you know, obviously, I think that one of the things that you guys have to do as municipalities, you know, use your resources to effect in ways that provide tangible benefit to the community and are fiscally responsible in that they generate revenue or save costs. And I think one of the things that's important to consider is that in the long term, quality services are more effective. And then, when you have more quality control on the services, they have better outcomes, and then you defray other costs by preventing, for example, people staying in, in cycles for a long time. So there's a couple of things that I, I just talk about with effectiveness is, you know, for one, I think it's important. You know, it's wonderful to continue the services, and obviously, we're, we're very excited about that. But we want to make sure that, you know, they're effective. And, and to sort of send, you know, there's problems, you know, with all municipalities with external accountability, right? And, and it's a struggle, you know, because you want to have accountable, effective programs, but you know, sometimes, you know, there's a stick approach, uses a penalty for noncompliance, and sometimes you need a balance. But often, when you have the same contractors year after year, and there's very little formal oversight over programs, the outcomes of the programs are reduced. And so you can look at that in some of the exit data from the various facilities. There's an idea to, that I don't agree with, to federally consider outdoor lots as shelters. And, and only one person is really through here, but I think it's a very poor idea because I think it's a fiscally irresponsible idea. You do organ damage to people, the outcomes are tremendously poor. You know, the money from federal sources should not be used, I believe, on those types of facilities. And I think, you know, to get good outcomes, you have to provide quality services just like the other services in the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Champion is next.
Hello, Mayor, Council. This is a citizen petition to the mayor and council of the city of Phoenix. I will not read all of the wherethes. Whereas, the city of Phoenix implemented rush hour reverse lanes on 7th Avenue in 1979 and 7th Street in 1981 to move traffic quickly in and out of downtown Phoenix prior to Arizona State Route 51 being built. These are the only two streets in Phoenix that function in this manner, and they're widely known as the Seven Suicide Lanes. They are confusing to locals and out-of-town visitors and encourage speeding and aggressive behavior. Many more people now live in downtown Phoenix, and numerous multifamily apartments have been built along 7th Street and 7th Avenue in the past 40-plus years. Multiple businesses are located along 7th Street and 7th Avenue, and their customers have a difficult time safely accessing and egressing their businesses depending on the time of day, and this harms their earning potential. The 7th Street and 7th Avenue rush hour reverse lanes do not conform with complete streets designed guidelines that were adopted by the city of Phoenix in 2018 and are not safe for drivers, pedestrians, or cyclists. There are numerous mid-block bus stops along both 7th Street and 7th Avenue with no pedestrian refuge and complete lack of recovery zone for drivers. The 7th Street and 7th Avenue rush hour reverse lanes cause people to cut through neighborhoods, use parking lots to cut through, make dangerous U-turns, and create a dangerous situation for everyone in their vicinity. Recent data and studies show there's a higher rate of crashes, and the 7th Street and 7th Avenue reverse lanes are significantly underutilized. The city of Phoenix completed a study in 2021 utilizing data that fails to account for current traffic usage. Other cities around the country, even those that had added digitized signage, including Tucson, Arizona, have removed their rush hour reverse lanes because they're dangerous, and we don't need more studies. More than 4,000 people and nearly 50 businesses have signed onto a change.org petition that requests the rush hour reverse lanes be removed by the city of Phoenix immediately for all the reasons highlighted above. Therefore, I, as citizen, all of the things that Nicole said previously, ask that the measures will, one, remove the outdated and dangerous 7th Avenue and 7th Street rush hour reverse lanes, and two, direct city manager to have Phoenix Streets Department staff develop a timely plan to remove or cover the reverse lane signage and create a reeducation PSA plan and/or campaign for drivers in the public who use the 7th Street and 7th Avenue rush hour reverse lanes with seven seconds to go. The end.
Very efficient. Jeremy Thacker will be our next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ironically, I didn't coordinate any of this, but I fully support both of the citizen petitions, fully. I live between the sevens, and they're a nightmare. I'm also submitting a citizen petition that I emailed to everyone regarding the city of Phoenix-owned municipal golf courses. I submitted this in 2022 as well. I was told that it did not qualify under the purview of the city council, which is ironic considering today that the city council voted on golf rates, which I think it pretty clearly states that it does fall. rates, which I think it pretty clearly states that it does fall under the purview. The city's golf courses are ridiculous. The fact that we're in that business is like the City of Vegas owning casinos. There's plenty of them already. Our seven golf courses use 1 billion gallons of water annually, all potable, no affluent. That's enough for 25,000 individuals that we put to our golf courses. Less than 1%, I'm sorry, between 1% and 2% of our population plays golf. Golf occupies 20% of City of Phoenix developed parks lands. 1% of the population, 20% of parks lands. The city also states that it's become profitable, that it's not losing money, because they don't pay rent on half a billion dollars in land. They don't pay, they paid $70,000 for that water, for a billion gallons. The inequity is incredible with this. We need to have a, to study this, we need to look at it, have an ad hoc committee that's not filled with golfers, but actually be proportionate and representative, like the City Council. We should, we need to look at this because otherwise, we're just robbing the wrong people. And the people living in historic neighborhoods where a lot of these golf courses are, who are paying half the tax and getting all the amenities, is just wild. So I'm asking for a review, and I emailed the Citizen Commission, or the Citizen Petition to everyone. Thanks. And get rid of the sevens.
Thank you so much. We have completed our public comment time. There were some people who registered, who did not yet get to speak, so we will take them first at our May 21 meeting. With that, we are adjourned.
And then as a mom myself, can I, want to?